Are we ready to go, Michelle? Okay. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the new first meeting. Who is everybody tonight? Very good. Okay. Commissioner Gibbons is visiting his grandson, I think. Granddaughter. Granddaughter who has graduated, is that correct? In Texas, so he should be back. I don't know if he'll, he's not invited this evening, but he'll be back very shortly. Okay, with that, minutes of the May 25th, 2016 meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing not at all in favor. Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing not at all in favor. Motion carries. Very good. At our last meeting, we introduced the budget ordinance 2016, 001 fiscal year 2017 budget. It is being presented tonight for adoption by our town charter. We had to at least wait six days, is that correct? Am I thinking? Not less than six. Not less than six, and it's been how many days? Seven? All right, very good. I'd like to have a motion to approve the fiscal budget.
Make motion. Approve the fiscal budget?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the budget? Hearing not at all in favor. Okay, Earl. Once again, I want to congratulate Commissioner Piner on his reelection, and I'd like to invite you down to the floor so I can swear you in if I do it. This is the exciting part of it. Ed, do you want him to hold it in his arms? Okay, Earl, if I could get you to raise your right hand, and I'm gonna keep my glasses on. Repeat after me, please. I, Earl M. Piner Sr.
I, Earl M. Piner Sr.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws.
And support the Constitution and laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
This is being administered today. Congratulations. Thank you. And we will be swearing in Commissioner Gibbons. I believe we may even do it at the workshop on June 8th, is that possible? Or should we wait till the 15th?
It could.
So it may be next Wednesday or it could be Wednesday. We'll see how he feels about it. Okay, with that, I think we have the Chesapeake Employers' presentation to the town of Elton. Are they here?
John Berkeley was coming to dial a statement here.
All right. We're gonna skip it for right now, and if he's not here, we're gonna bypass him altogether. Lou, do you have anything to report this evening? Very good. I had a couple things I wanted to bring up. Dan, there was a, a few residents has stated to me that our trash hauler is not picking up the items like they used to pick up. And I don't have a specific case in point for you, but is there, can, is there a, is waste management supposed to be picking up all items?
Construction debris, and we had a conversation about wood furniture. I need to revisit that conversation.
Okay, very good. Because I know by our contract, what, you know, specifically maybe you need to get with Louis and define that a little bit, but it seemed like to me there's one fellow did mention that there was some construction debris, but it was just a small, couple pieces of lattice. Now, small to him may have been more so than I thought, and then there was one individual who had a toilet that he replaced out of his home. He said we didn't pick up the toilet.
Correct. It was construction debris.
Okay, even though that was a residential removal, that's how they're classifying that.
It goes in the comparable management. Now, if the person can bring it down to my partner, we have a dumpster available for town.
Okay. I just don't want it to cost the town any more money by us going back and picking those items up. I know we're billing the resident on that, but I don't want us to have to go pick that up, haul it away, and next thing you know, the resident has a $200 bill when it couldn't have been picked up initially by them. Let's take a close look at that. John, I wanted to bring up, Mr. Butler brought this up earlier to me, and I can tell you this is something that's a touchstone with, I think, everyone in this room. We've seen it. I know it's a First Amendment issue. We've discussed this, but maybe we could look to see how in our business district on public property, we could require all people to wear t-shirts in the town, within that business district. And I, I know it's a challenge, it's a First Amendment issue, but maybe there's, by defining it into the business district and really counting it home, maybe we can eliminate that because it's, I can tell you, everyone that visits our town, I think that there's more shirtless individuals than you've ever seen in your life, and maybe there's something we can do to require them to wear a t-shirt. Take a look at that for us. With that, that's all I, well, that's all I have at this point. Commissioner Jablonski?
I just, I've noticed it like the past three nights, and I was told this person's out there all the time. There's a man in a wheelchair on 213 and Whitehall Road by Renner's, and he's been there, I've seen him three times. My son-in-law says he's there almost every night, but he tends to go into the middle of the road. I was gonna call for the chief about it, he's not here. If we could look into that, because I think it's very dangerous for him. There's no reflectors on his wheelchair, and it's at nighttime, and if somebody could just look and see, I see Captain Zerolo back there. Thank you. And I just wanted to commend everyone on helping with the Memorial Day parade, the volunteers that were out there, the police and public works. I've received a few phone calls saying it was the best ever for opening the roads. So I did want to mention that to the chief and Captain Zerolo, and please pass it on to McDonald, or not McDonald, to Matt, Lieutenant Waldrich, yes, I'm sorry. Because they closed the roads right before the parade, they were open right after they went by, and everyone seemed happy about that. And I also wanted to thank the Hare family for entertaining Colonel Davis and taking them to the Hermitage. She called yesterday and really, really enjoyed it and wants to come back again, so I want to thank them as well. And again, congratulations to Commissioner Piner.
Thank you, Commissioner Joe Jablonski. Glad to hear your name. Now, I'm gonna start off fresh and new. You're not even one of those guys today. I'd like to, first of all, start by saying I really appreciate the support and the help from the town police, all their hard work that they're doing in the town. And one of the topics came to me during our election campaigning was where are we doing as officials to help strengthen the police department and help them to do the things that they do? One of the things I would like to introduce tonight is, or ask the lawyer to look into is, how can we strengthen our nuisance law or ordinance? That's Chapter 9, Point 200, so that we can provide a little bit more help when they do make these arrests. I would like to add the word, add public property into that ordinance. That way, we can start to be able to be a little bit more tighter on when people are doing their criminal activities. Can we check into that?
Certainly.
That's number one. And number two, I'm gonna bring up the really big one. I read on Facebook where someone asked a question about these vehicles running around town, selling all the back of their vehicles, and the question was, isn't there an ordinance in the town of Elton to prevent someone from doing this? I started to respond, but I don't like doing that, so I stopped right in the middle of my sentence. I said, let me check with the town of Elton. And then it said in there, the soliciting part of it is, one, if we have no soliciting, no one's supposed to be knocking on your doors, whatever, but the vehicles are selling all of, without license, or without license.
Could you add into that for me, Michelle?
We put on the website that transient vendor permit is required if you are selling from your vehicle door, that kind of thing. So we did send that message out, and it is a police matter, so if you think that someone's selling without a permit, you might have to please be a 911, and then they'll respond and send the first officer to get their permit.
So we asked the citizens, if you see this taking place, call the police. Let the police handle it from there. Don't confront them, just if you got a tag number, call it in. And I'm doing, one thing I did, I noticed a while back, I don't get no names, but I experienced years ago buying some food, meat from a truck, and food poisoning for three days. There's no way you can track that person down. So if you're gonna buy from the store, our local stores, at least you can go back to the store and say, I brought it from here. So at one good point, at least know where you're buying it from and what you're buying. So that's one reason why I want to bring that up. Okay? And for the homeowners associations, even though we are dealing with town issues, I would like for me to be the contact person. I made this commitment when I was out walking around, saying, I want to be more involved with the homeowners associations, because in different areas, in different parts of the town, I don't know what's going on in your neighborhood unless you come into the town. Most time they come complaining about things we don't know about. Maybe if nothing else, in writing, some of your meetings, forward it to me, and maybe if I can make it to your meetings, I'll come and sit in. We're dealing with the town issues that we can do to help out in those neighborhoods. And then by doing that, we would have interaction with the homeowners associations around town. Not saying we're gonna solve all your problems, but at least we'd be aware of some of the issues that you're talking about in your meetings. I can bring it back to the board, and we can see what we can do to be more involved. And that's another commitment that I made. Now, the big one is, I would love Mayor to reduce our water and sewer bill right away. By saying that, I know we have an audit that's being done, but we made a, I made a proposal last time about the order that we did find already, that we haven't included into our audit, that I want to get back to the town taxpayers, into their next bill order bill to come. So as I'm asking you, I know Gibbons is not here, so maybe we might have to wait one more meeting, but I want to move on this right away, and I want to get a nice big decrease in our water and sewer bill. Thank you.
Very good. I don't think anyone's gonna argue that. I think it happens. And I sure, I'm sure we can make it happen. I wanted to address one thing before I open the floor to the public. Of course, we know that we have a vacant commissioner seat, and at the end of our last meeting, we had a closed session, and normally we don't discuss what's going on in closed session, but in this case, I think everyone knew that we were discussing how we're gonna fill this position. And the position by the charter, it's, the position is, is an appointment by this elective body up here. And we asked everyone that's interested to respond to me in a way that you're interested in that position. And I can tell you that we've got nine individuals that have reached out to me that said that they had interest in that position. What we're gonna do when Charlie gets back, we're gonna have, I would assume that we'll have a closed meeting, probably on June 15th, to narrow this down a little bit, or maybe even choose that individual. I would not say that we're gonna, I don't want to go out on a limb to say that we would choose anyone, but I would say that what we'll do is narrow it down, and then we would probably collectively vet this, these individuals. Now, anyone that has interest in moving forward and applying for this town commissioner position, I recommend that you reach out to me, you reach out to Commissioner Piner, Commissioner Jablonski, and Commissioner Gibbons, because it's very important that we're all on the same page. I can assure you, we're not gonna appoint someone that's not on the same page of us. I can, I can, I can make that very clear to everybody, but that's the process of how we're gonna move forward with this. So it's gonna work out, I think, pretty smoothly. Do you guys agree with the method that we're doing? I think that's what we've somewhat discussed, and the board members know, we're not gonna mention anyone's names who's on the list, but if they want to let me, anyone aware that they're on the list, they certainly can, or at least they've touched base with us. You know, that's, that's a very good point. We had one individual that had requested, and I will tell you, it was a very, very good candidate, but you have to be living in the town of Elton for one year to be the commissioner. So this individual wasn't quite there a year, and if we delayed it for a period of time, maybe they would qualify, but I think that's something else that everyone needs to know. And hopefully, any questions that you would have, I'd be happy to answer. You have something to add?
Would it be nice for, not nice, would it be appropriate to put a time limit when we'd like to have this done by?
I would think that June 15th would be the final time that I would take anyone's name. Where do you think?
And then hopefully, by the end of the month, we can have someone chosen?
Yeah, I'd love to. I think, do you feel that way?
I would like to get whoever's on, going right away so we can give any pressure to start.
I'm good with that.
So hopefully by June the 30th, we have someone appointed, hopefully.
That would be my goal. I appreciate that. And with that, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor to the public. If anyone has anything to say, please come down, sign in, and.
Look, Jim. Yeah, because if you, I know you were setting deadlines for June 15th, but you'd have to, if you had a meeting, the next meeting would be until July, July 6th, because they'd have to be sworn in as of the meeting.
So we could close it?
You could close it on 1, 10, 2.
On July 6th?
Yeah.
We would have the swearing in on July 6th. How's that sound? Are you okay with that? Very good. I'm gonna put this list. If you have anything to say tonight, please come up and have a seat and sign in for us. With that, I saw Mr. Hare wanted to say something. Mr. Rick Keane, come on down.
Mr. Rick Keane is in the Elton Heights. I don't know his address, though.
403 Mary Ellen Avenue.
403. That player will never forget that.
Don't get nervous. I'm here tonight to say thank you. My, my son and daughter-in-law and two grandkids were up this weekend for the holiday, and they had a great time. Saturday, they went to the Fair Hill races, enjoyed it. Sunday, they went to Sesame Place, and Monday, they were just kinda hanging out, getting ready to go back to Virginia. I said, look, the town has a parade, why don't we go to the parade? They had a great time. They truly, truly enjoyed it. They're six and three.
Oh, wow.
That was just great. In fact, they wanted to see it twice. We started out with one quarter. They went fly, had a great time, and they said, we wanna see more, so we walked up to North Street and saw it again. So, of course, the candy had something to do with it, but they really enjoyed it. So I wanted to just say thanks to the town, thanks to the mayor and the commissioners, thanks to the police department, and thanks to the organizers. It was a great time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ray Carroll. Mr. Gray Hare?
Just a couple things. By the way, sunshine now. The, the town is. The first thing I wanted to mention, and my ladies are all good, I know Jeff Holder's getting a lot of mowing done on Main Street, different areas, and I think they're mostly kind of dance, floating. I want to make sure that we're sending those people the good ones. For example, that lot, there's a big lot next to my office, that we moved down years ago.
Yes.
And it's, the guy owns that, doesn't count for me, because that being I know the real to call me, you don't know who he's getting the mowing. I said, well, the town sold it last year, and I want to make sure there's some big bills out. By the way, we did try and contract it, mowing it. But like, the town owns the lot between the coffee shop and the gift shop. I know those are town properties. No, when we do that, we gotta really send, I'm talking like a big, like 200, 300, 400, I don't know what the ball is, but we gotta, we gotta look at potential. If one thing happened on that, they probably won't ever pay it until somebody buys the property, then they sell it and prove a business, pay that bill. And there's a lot of places you all clean up. I want to make sure, and I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're doing that, close the loop and make sure the people get paid.
We do. There's finance issues, the property under the bill, and then we, after they get a certified letter, we cut the grass, then we'll place a lien on the property, and we'll cut and get our money, or we sold with tax sale. We only get the money.
The minimum bill's $230.
What is it?
It's $100 an hour, minimum, two hours, $30 tax. He says $230 is the minimum.
Yeah, because that, that lot there next to the coffee shop is pretty stupid.
Yeah, pretty stupid. That G A L, Santini property.
Second thing, talk about dress code, and I really, I really liked that idea. You know, New York City had the dress code. New York City, all New York City walking around in shoes off, they're, they're just busting around Times Square. I know, New York City can do it, we can do it. And third thing, a certain follower of mine just fell on and said, Colonel Davis, when he came up here, he had his wife and three daughters. They really liked Elton, they'd never been here before. He's a new commander down in Aberdeen, he's from North Carolina, he's been in the county for quite a while, and he was really impressed with how neat the Main Street was, and he wants to come back, in fact, come on and invite me back and meet you at Fair Hill. He wants to come back here to see the town in Fair Hill. We're talking about, he still likes to see that. That's all I have. Keep up the work.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Lemon? Maybe I can get a remote, my remote mic can take to you.
That's because I know you don't think I can walk up. The subject is, everyone, our problem is water. Where do we stand on smart meters? And if part of it is, is where are the funds? We're talking about returning money, you know, in water bills, and I think that was heard loud and clear by Earl and others during this election. But where are the funds gonna come from, the smart meters, and where do we stand on smart meters?
That's a great question. What we determined after we met with Severn Trent here at KCI, that at the Maryland Municipal League venue, which is at the end of the month, I will be attending, I'm gonna meet with the folks from the meter company at the exhibit and find the correct meter and get some more details to bring back to the board. But the funding would come out of either the water fund or the major facility fund, depending on which one, which direction we're gonna go there.
And we're talking a couple million dollars?
We're not sure. I would, I would, I think our early estimate was well over a million dollars, but I'm not sure if it hit 2 million. With labor, installation, it would certainly take it probably close to 2 million.
Yeah, so you extrapolated that about the guy who's talking about your workshop?
Yes.
It seems to me it must have been in that direction.
And we brought up some questions that brought up a red flag on some of the meters tampering with them, and if it's a possibility, somebody could do some internal stuff with them, so some questions were brought up, which kind of made them step back a little bit.
What did you say to Maryland District?
It's the end, it's the end of June, so it's the end of this month.
Two.
No, no, not at all. In fact, we'll have, I feel pretty comfortable to say that we'll have that information for the July 6th meeting.
Yeah, they're actually, they set up a separate meeting on Tuesday at 1:00. It's been confirmed for us to actually meet with KCI and the meter people.
Perfect.
I just, it's very important to remove, from my perspective, maybe yours, that we move quickly with this. I heard you saying to me, well, it's gonna take six or seven years. That doesn't seem real long to me to put that way. It seems to me we should push hard to get it done in a couple of years at the max. And I know that's easier said than done, but I think it's a great, I think you have a great water program going, different things that you're doing, upgrading systems and all. I just think this is an enhancement in the way that we're doing the town.
It will be.
Lewis, didn't you tell me, or somebody, didn't you even say that you're gonna be at the school?
No, Dan, Dan and his people were all up there today. Had a great gate presentation.
So tell us how, how did it go?
Great.
Give us a move, can you give a little detail of what it is?
Actually, somebody, somebody was sitting in the office. I mean, there he is, he can tell you about it, I'll tell you about it.
He's one of the return.
You know, we addressed everything about infrastructure. We talked about water, wastewater, you know, with myself and Sidney O'Gorman, we talked about the city water program, and Jason Garrett from Severn Trent, we talked about the infrastructure work, and how that kind of local government, which we want to explain that to, you know, do that stuff, develop that infrastructure.
And Dan, this was at Elton High School?
Yes. They were grilled by the advanced placement, US government students, so the students gave a good run for their money, and they did a fantastic job. I happened to be there at the school visit, and so I'll tip my cap to Dan, it was outstanding. Really nice.
Mr. Lemon, have one more thing to add?
John, I like to talk. You're gonna have to come back in. I suggested this program last year, and it's partly because of my experience coming down here to these meetings, that you find out the importance of local government and what it does to help the citizens and all the important functions of the government down here. I thought it was very important for the students at the high school to learn about the local government, and hopefully that would lead to more participation in the future. Last year, Louis and some of the department heads and maybe you guys went up there and made a presentation to some of the classes, and it probably went over very well. And you're saying you made presentations this year, and it went over terrific.
Some of the students' projects are amazing, you do very good work, so they're very bright, so it was good to change my ideas, so.
Well, there's nothing bright there, we're not.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, I think it's a very, I think it's a very important program that I plan to do again this year. I hope you can do it next year. I'm pretty.
Thank you, sir.
that you find out the importance of local government and what it does to help the citizens and all the important functions of the government down here. I thought it was very important for the students at the high school to learn about the local government, and hopefully, that would lead to more participation in the future. Last year, Lewis and some of the department heads and maybe you guys went up there and made a presentation to some of the classes, and it apparently went over very well. You're saying you made presentations this year, and it went over terrific.
Some of the students' projects are amazing, they do very good work, so they're very bright, so it was good to change my ideas.
Well, they're nothing bright there, we don't have them. But anyway, I, I think it's a very, I think it's a very important program that I plan to be doing again this year. I hope you can do it next year.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything to add this evening? Mr. Gasaway? Here are you. That's the official ink pen that Earl signed his documentation with. I'm sure he'll let you have that. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name's Kendall Gasaway. Address, 135 Bitch Drive, Elton Road, Walnut Hill. I have two. You talked about the pickup trash, you know, trash, but I like their trash junk ghetto. How about, what days do they pick them up? On Mondays or Thursdays?
You're, you're, depending on your, your area, there's, we'll make sure that we give you one of the community guys before you leave here tonight, if you've never received one. But your neighborhood, it's either, your regular trash is either Monday or Tuesday.
Monday and Wednesday.
Your Monday and Wednesday.
Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday. So your regular trash is Monday, and your recyclables are Tuesday.
So I can say, I got a refrigerator, freezer, I'm gonna put out there, that'd be Thursday. They won't pick up something with freon in it?
It's got freon in it, that's why.
Got freon in it?
They won't pick it up.
They'll pick it up.
And now, if you, if you can take the three-on-and-out, put it out to regular trash day, they'll take it.
I think it's completely gone.
We have to have it certified.
Now, to pick up a refrigerator, Mr. Gasaway needed to pick up, would he call Public Works and ask for them to pick it up for him?
If you, the waste management will pick up appliances on your scheduled day, but when it comes to a refrigerator, freezer, it's got a new brand, it's gotta be stamped, and then they'll take it.
Well, I was, I called down here to the office on Monday, and they told me that, put it out there, make sure that it's taped up, it's a chest freezer, that'll be, and they gotta get it to pick it up. And she said, "It's okay to put it out there on Monday." That's why I'm here to ask that question.
If you were your trash day, whatever, your trash day.
No, if it has freon in it, if it's certified, then, you know, by a contractor, if you move it, they will not pick it up. They, their people are barred from picking up freon-containing devices.
So the question is, if, if waste management won't pick it up, who can pick it up for Mr. Gasaway? Is it dispose of it himself?
He can sell it too. Where's that, Walnut Hill?
Yeah.
I know a guy that picks it up. He drives to McDonald's every day, picks up scrap. He can sell that, he'll sell it.
When's a good time to put it out there for you when to pick it up? Will we talk after the meeting?
I'll tell him tomorrow morning, just put it out there.
I won't be able to do it tomorrow?
Well, so I'll tell him, check it out next week.
We'll talk and get a number for you, and I'll give you a call when you know.
Don't worry, they also has a program. They get, they'll take used appliances with freon, and contact them, and then don't pay you for it.
Okay. Oh, I'll take that. I don't think I've seen that, or get my friends. Thank you. My second question is, I'm a new resident in Elton, Memphis, and I wanna get more involved in this. First of all, just want to congratulate you. In my neighborhood, I live on Bitch Drive, and behind Bitch Drive is an overflow parking. I've talked to a couple of officers who do a drive-by once in a while. It's a lot of activity out there, and I don't wanna get involved because I have a grand son in my house, and I do not want no activity, or do not want no, you know, I don't wanna get involved in someone. So I'd like for the officers of Elton to do more drive-bys in that neighborhood, within that area. I sort of my deck at times, my family said, "We have their own deck," and sit there and watch that activity go on. It's great.
I think it's noted, and, and just if you could, if you could dial 398-4200, pound 9 is our hotline, and if you could, if you start seeing the activity in certain times of the day, that'll help them determine their, their drive-bys also. So you, I don't think you have to give your name, 398-4200, pound 9, and, and that'll be the hotline. You can say, "The backport at Bitch Drive, suspicious activity," and that would put them on the radar. But consider it noted. We'll make sure we can, I know that they patrol that area every day. We patrol every neighborhood, but maybe specific to that kind of, we can...
It's a nice neighborhood, and I hate to see good. Where I know of, Bitch Drive is pretty nice here. We need to get that across the street from us, and, you know, for that area.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Greatness.
And I'd like to say, we played on the same baseball team for one year.
Same school, same neighborhood.
Yes, we did. Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
Can I just add to what he was saying? You're also supposed to call 911. You see something, I have Elton Forest, I'm on that phone, if I see anything, and they're there right away. So keep up the good work.
I'm aware of that, yeah, I'm aware of that, but I just don't wanna approach, I'm like, "Hass."
And I understand, I understand her point too. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.